Welcome to the March 19th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. I'm gonna handle the prayer and the pledge, if you'll bow with me. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we get to be here tonight. There's so much going on in our, our community, in our state, in our country, and in the world. Lord, I'm thankful for the people that we have that are working on the many issues that we're dealing with. You know, there's, there's so many things that are happening that, that we know that we don't have control over, that ultimately you have control over. So, Lord, we ask for wisdom, we ask for guidance, we pray for our healthcare providers, we pray for all of those that are, that are in the middle of the fight, for all those that are scared, for fear. Lord, in First Timothy, you tell us that we don't have a spirit of fear, that you didn't give us that, but you gave us a spirit of strength, and we claim that. Lord, I just pray for all the staff that are in our city, that you give them the obedience to be able to make the decisions that we need to make, that, Lord, we're not worried about what public sentiment, or we're worried about what's right, and we're worried about the decisions that need to be made. I thank you for the men and the women that are here tonight, I thank you for the men and women that are here to be away from their families, and, and, Lord, that you give us guidance to be able to make the decisions that'll be fitting and worthy of you. We ask all these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanna make a couple of quick comments before we get started. You know, we are meeting tonight, there's very few of us that are here, the council is, is closed. We've practicing our social distancing that, that the CDC and that our president and our governor are recommending. But, you know, at the end of the day, we still have business that we have to do inside our city, and wanna make sure that the residents know that there's been a lot of planning over the last month that has gone into the things that all of our staff have, have been working on for essential services to be provided inside of our city. With that, we wanna make sure that our employees are safe, our emergency service providers are safe, our residents are safe. There's been a lot of sentiment out there on, you know, why is the city not closed down? You know, why, why do, why have we not shut down restaurants, or have we not shut down all of these different things? And what I wanna tell you, and have shared with the council members, you know, we don't have the authority to be able to shut down every restaurant or, or, or business inside the city of Murfreesboro. What we have to be able to do is to let, let the public know, these are the CDC guidelines, this is what the state's recommending, and, and that's what we wanna to, to stick with. I can tell you, you know, we've, we've had things inside of our community that we have fought before, and that we've prevailed, and the guidance, the cooperation between our local municipalities, I've been able to be in meetings with all of our mayors over the last couple of weeks, the cooperation with our county, the cooperation with our state, and the cooperation with our federal government. I feel very confident that anything that comes along, we're gonna be able to handle. Do any of us up here know exactly what's gonna happen? We don't. We, I was sharing with the, the council members that we don't have control over a lot of these things. So, what we wanna ask our residents to do is to be smart, to be able to take the precautions that they need to be able to take, not only individually, but with their families. The thing I, I wanna press upon our, our, our residents, we need to pray. We need to pray for those that are serving our community, the healthcare providers that are serving all of our residents. They all have families, our emergency service providers, but from our firefighters to our police officers to our Rutherford County EMS, our sheriff's department, those individuals are all still gonna be on the job in making sure that essential services are provided. If you will, as, if, if you're watching this, we wanna make sure that you know that the county health department, we, I've, I talk with the director, Ms. Garrett, every single day. Their number is 615-898-7880. You can get any guidance from the county health department. The county has released private testing locations. You can go to their website at rutherfordcountytn.gov to be able to get those, those locations. But you also, I know our, our communication team has been working nonstop on making sure that our citizens are educated and are updated. You can go to murfreesborotn.gov. On our homepage, you have one, a link to go to a coronavirus section, and there is more information on there than, than, there's, there's any information that you'll need will be on there. CDC, WHO, our state government, our state health department, our county health department. So, please make sure and utilize those. And all of us who are up here, all of our, all of the council members, we all are, are active on social media, or we all check our emails, so if there's anything that you have a question about, do not hesitate to contact us. If we don't know the answers, we will get you the answers. It's times like this that we all come together, and, and I think that's something that this city has shown that we can do, that we will do, and that we'll work together. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our consent agenda. Any, any questions on our consent agenda?
If there's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
All right, motion second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into land use matters, rescheduling matters previously heard by the planning commission for public hearing, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. As you know, we were supposed to have a number of public hearings at tonight's meeting, and those public hearings were canceled in light of the current public health situation. We would ask that you, where we would recommend that you reschedule those public hearings, and the recommended date is April the 30th. Be happy to answer any questions, and if you need me to go over the ones that we had scheduled for tonight, I'd be happy to do that, but they're listed in the agenda materials.
Mr. Blomley would like to make, and I know we've, we've talked about this from a legal standpoint, Mr. um... I'll, I'll get this under other business, go ahead, go ahead. All right, council members, does that sound okay to, to everyone?
April 30th.
Yep.
Be a long meeting.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, we have planning commission recommendations for public hearings.
Thank you, these were the ones that I was, that I was planning to bring before you, that the planning commission acted on last, last Wednesday, and they recommend approval of these items. They're on the, the second memo with a list of public hearings, and we would recommend that you schedule those items for May the 7th. Of note, one of those items is the One East College Plan Development zoning request for the former city-owned property. Be happy to answer any questions, May 7th is the recommended date.
Do we have a motion for May the 7th?
Second.
Councilman Shacklet, Councilman Martin.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you, Mr. Blomley, appreciate your hard work. All right, on motion, we have approval request to sell 154 acres of city-owned property.
Uh, Mayor and council, this is a property that the city purchased in 2017. It's 154 acres out about a mile and a quarter from Veterans Park, Veterans Parkway out on Highway 96. At the time we purchased it, the city didn't have any specific plans for it. It has been looked at, considered for a potential park site, however, those plans haven't come to fruition, haven't gone very far. The county has approached with an offer to purchase that property for a high school, middle school, grade school, that would serve not only county residents, but city residents. The offer is consistent with appraisal of that property, and they agreed to pay a small amount. The city invested in engineering studies on that property. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that. We request that the council approve going forward with that sale. We'd sign the contract, there's a due diligence period in there for the county to do the necessary studies they need to do before it would close.
Mr. Tinnell, what's that cost, what's the sale price on that?
Uh, sale price on the property is 4.2 million. And then, I think, engineering studies and such reimbursements around 70, if I remember, 60, 70,000.
Do you know what per acre that works out to?
I can tell you in a second. 154. That is, well... It's about 27, 27,000 acre, a little over, about 27,300 acre.
To give you a comparison, I know it's not necessarily comparing apples to apples, but we paid 40 per acre for the 840 site.
This site has some unique features that made it difficult for us to actually do a park planning on it, but the city schools feels that they can, they can handle that. There's a little, some wet areas that need to be graded out, and there is a pipeline that bisects that property.
Yes, we paid 25 an acre for this, this piece.
Yeah, but I, I think our whole point is, is, and anybody's welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're, we're trying to use this property for its best use, and I think we all agree that the best use of this property currently would be for the county to use it as a high school and that type facility, and that there's probably a better area for us to look at for a park. So, I, I, I'm, I'm just assuming that that's the direction we're going, and, and we're not losing anything, we're not making anything off this. I think we're just trying to help out the county, and we've got the property, we've got it at a good price. We're gonna pass the good price along to them, and, and it's fortunate for all of us that we did what we did, and it's fortunate that we had it available for the counties to help the, us as county residents to, on the purchase, on their side, so I think it's beneficial to all of us.
My understanding, the county's been looking for quite a while in that area with the growth, and...
You know, we all, sitting up here, we could not find land to build Salem. I mean, it, it, we, we couldn't find land, so we ended up paying for Salem. I wanna say we were 70 an acre is what we paid for our, our new elementary school, not including site work. It's just really tough to find, on that west side of town, it's tough to find acreage for a school site. So, that, that's something I, I know the residents and overall public don't understand how hard it is to, to be able to find, you know, you only say 25 acres is what you need to build an elementary school, but trying to find a multi-campus site on that side of town that you've got infrastructure is extremely tough. So, Mr. Tucker.
Yes, Mayor McFarland, member of the city council, I just, I wanted to address one issue in the event that members of the public had questioned about it. The, this property was purchased with bond proceeds, and I have, I have reviewed this issue. I've also spoken with the city's bond council about this, about whether that raises any issues with respect to the, the sale of the land and the use of the proceeds from the sale of the land. I do have a letter come, forthcoming from bond council on this, but neither he nor I see any issues with, with the sale of the property. And there are some options that the city has with respect to the use of the funds, but certainly one of those that is possible is just to put that money, the proceeds, back into the pool that we would have used for community improvement projects. So, that's, I just wanted to address that and put that out front.
I would ask that any motion, if you would, please make that subject to, to staff comments, that would be, be great.
Yeah, it would be consistent with our policy, if, if we were gonna sell a long-term asset, that we'd reinvest those funds that we received from that, not into our operating side, but into our, as Adam said, our community investment program.
You might not be able to answer this, but, because I know this decision came from your answer, but is, you mentioned something about a three-school complex, elementary, middle, and high school. Is that your understanding from the counties, that they're going to use it for a three-school complex? Is that...
That was my, that was my understanding, but I, I...
I think it's just two, isn't it?
Middle school and high school?
Yeah, middle and high.
Middle school and high school, so I stand corrected, okay.
I had heard middle and high school was...
Okay, all right.
I just wanted, when you mentioned that, I, I just was making sure we were clear.
I think, I think the overall thought is you've got overall, that's probably a mile and a half, two miles from there. Then you got Case and Lane, Scales.
Salem too.
Salem, Crete, so, yeah.
I have a few comments. Obviously, this is brought, Adam brought this to planning, I think, no, Mr. Oles brought this to planning this, earlier this week, and I abstained from the vote because it was brought up in other business, and I didn't know it was gonna be brought up, so it was kinda brought up at the end of that meeting. To be clear, I don't have any objection at all in us selling the property. I've had some folks ask me about that, you know, why would we not sell it, you know, to the county for a profit? I think most of us would know the answer to that, you know, we don't wanna overcharge, or, you know, pass on an expense to the county, many of which are city residents that would be paying for it anyway. So, I think that makes a ton of sense. But it, it does bring up the point, as I was looking through the agenda today, we're talking about a refinance of variable rate debt, and moving it to fixed-rate debt. So, in, in my mind, if you'll just kinda go through this path with me, I'm thinking, if we're gonna take $4 million in that we did on a bond issue, why would we necessarily be borrowing $20 million to refinance? Why wouldn't we borrow $4 million less? And I do know, based on some of the conversation we've had, there's some precedent related to long-term assets and how we do that. I would still advocate for a policy within the city where if we're, if we are going to take that money in, it's non-recurring funds, I do think it should be separated from the general fund monies that come in, and I do think council, outside of the budget discussion, should specifically make some decisions related to those one-time funds, because they're not recurring funds, and I think it's too easy for that to get blended into the pot, and then for us to look at a budget where we're not exactly sure what's recurring, operating, and what's one-time, and how to separate it in that moment when we're trying to deal with all those other things. And I think there's been some precedent in the past where that caused some challenges related to some of the gateway land, and I'm not trying to pin that on anybody or anything, but just as a best practice, I don't view that as a best practice that we should be following. Now, the council may not agree with that, staff may not agree with that, but as long as we continue to sell one-time, non-recurring assets, I'm gonna advocate that money be set aside separately and be decisioned separately from anything else that we do.
Adam, are you, you stood up as if you're, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, some, some kinda, I think we have all talked about this at one point or another, that we agree that that's a, you know, and just as Craig said, kind of reflective of what we've talked about over the years, you know, the last couple of years in particular of making sure we do something. I mean, is there a way to, to set up a different, a different enterprise fund, or whatever you wanna call that, that would be kind of a one-time fund? Or what would be, is there, could you at least look into a mechanism for that, or what would be the...
We could certainly look into a mechanism. The two points I stood up to address was, one, just to be clear, that the bonds that were, that's, that are before you this evening for refunding were not used to purchase this land, it's a different set of bonds.
Sure.
That, that's, that's point number one. The second one, to Mr. Martin's point, is one of, one of the options, in addition to putting it back into a pool for capital or community investment projects, another option for this, for the, the pro, for the proceeds of the sale is to use them to defees exist, uh, the bonds, an existing debt. So, that is, but that is something, that, that is not before you here.
Can I make one, so, I look at this as, if we borrow money to buy that property, which we, we did, correct? And if we said it was 25,000 an acre, and for 154 acres, so that's 3.85 million, and we're selling it for, for, what's the total amount?
4.2.
4.2.
4.2. I look at this from, really from a banking side, that we, we owe 3.85 million dollars on that land, and whether we can't pay that, that bond off because the way that the bond is issued, we need to at least take the proceeds from that 4-point X number million that we get, and that 3.85 needs to be paid off. If that means that we don't borrow 3.85 more million, that three, that 4 million doesn't need to go into the general fund that we just saved, so that, and then the excess money that we have, which is that 400 and 500,000 dollars, we make sure we reimburse ourselves for the funds that we expended on the park, and then whatever the excess is, then, you know, that's a decision that council...
That would, that would seem more, I mean, appropriate for that to go to the general fund, you know? I mean, that'd be, I mean, but the, I mean, at least, at the very least, the original piece. So, so, you, you mentioned something that I, I'm sure I probably heard it wrong, but it sounded like there was a contradiction that either we, we can use it to pay off debt, or we, that, that's debt that's not the specific debt that we borrowed, or we can't use it to pay off the specific, or anything other than the specific debt.
I apologize if, if I was unclear. We can use, so there, I think there were three bond issues that were you, the pros, from which proceeds from those bond issues were used to acquire this property. Use the proceeds from the sale to defees a portion of the, the debt remaining on those bonds. So, you would defees that, that debt, that is an option.
Yeah, we have to, we, the, the money, what, what we're talking about is, is exactly what we talked about in last year's budget, and this is why we set up last year's budget the way we did, and why we are very careful now to set things up to have money that's operating side, and operating revenues, and then a community investment program, and to stop mixing the two. So, you know, we are well into that, that process. You know, we shifted into debt management, and what we can pay off, and what we can't pay off, and, and that's, that's a, that's a much more arduous analysis that we can go through, and we can certainly look at that, and we can set policies to do that. But we, the, the bonds that were issued here were probably issued in 2017, and they generally have a 10-year non-callable, so we wouldn't be able to pay off that debt anyway. Could we offset other debt that we are gonna incur on the CIP? Well, certainly, and that's what we would set aside the money to be used for, so...
You could do that in, through the general fund, though, I think the purpose is...
We could allocate money to the general fund to, to do that. I mean, those, those are the decisions that come up when we make a decision on how we're gonna finance that CIP, and what, what the CIP is gonna, to be for any particular year that we're doing. But it's, it would be very difficult to take money that we borrowed in 17 and, and have it come available to us, and then try and put it back on the 17 debt.
What about the variable rate? What about the variable rate debt? Can't, can't we pay that off with general fund dollars, or with any dollars we choose to?
I would have to, I would have to look at the particular debt issuance in the bonds. I know at least, at least one of the, the bond issues, the proceeds from which were used to purchase this property, they've already, there has been a call date, and you could defees those, but Craig and Melissa are correct, there, there may be some that have, it's premature to, to defees those at this point.
It's fine, I, I...
We can take a look at the, the bond, the bond issue that is gonna come up next, and, and the resolutions, resolutions come up next. We, we won't go to market tomorrow on that, you know, where there is a period of time where we can talk about and see what needs to be done, but the market right now is not where we wanna be, not where anybody wants to be, even in the bond market right now. And so, we'll take some time to, to time that out to the appropriate place, and we can see and do the calculations to whether it makes sense to use that money this way or offset other proceeds that we need for projects that are coming up that the council's already looked at.
I think I see all the council members shaking their head. I think what we wanna make sure is, you know, if, if we were to sell this property, we still technically owe money on this property, and we don't want the proceeds to come in and end up going into the general fund, knowing that that money was, that's borrowed, a lot of that's borrowed money.
This is, I mean, look, I think this is simple.
I don't even think we can legally, I don't think we can do that legally.
No, I, I would agree. I would agree, you can't, we can't use it to fund general operations. If you, if you wanted, because the definition of project in the bond issues was written so broad, you could use the money for another project, but you could not use the money to fund general operations.
And I wanna make sure I'm clear on this too, because I may not be being clear. I, I'm not concerned about us doing that, because I think we have put things in place where we're not doing that, so I'm not arguing that point. What I'm saying is, I think it's too easy to lose track of that money when we dump it into the bucket, and we say, hey, it'll be used for CIP, and as we're trying to make a decision on CIP, which was not made at this particular point, when there's still a debt issue out there for that, when, if we're refinancing money in this next discussion, we're paying off debt, why not pay off less debt, for one, even if it's not exactly for that bond issue? Can we not do that? I mean, we could take general fund money and pay down a debt issue if we're refinancing. So, I assume we could take one-time money that's coming in and pay down the debt issue.
I would, I would defer to bond council on that, but I, I think, I think so. And I think maybe the appropriate action to do here is, is that we will have this, you know, there will be a, a decision at a later date, once the proceeds have come in from the sale.
My point is, it's hard to keep up with that stuff. If you don't do it in the moment when you do it, we may, I'm not speaking for you guys, I may forget that, hey, that $4 million in, for capital improvements, where did it come from, and how did it get there? And will it be there again, and how it's planned moving forward? And, you know, the other piece to this too, is we're talking about having, you know, we've not gotten to the impact fee discussion yet, but I mean, those are non-recurring revenues. What are we gonna do with that? How is that money gonna be handled?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be used for, for operating expenses. It, it would have to be used for capital improvements, and, you know, we can set up the mechanisms to look at that, but...
Councilman Smotherman.
Sorry.
And, and as in many cases, Ronnie and I are in complete harmony on this. We, I, I agree with you 100%. If, if we do have debt planned out there that's looking at $20 million, and we've got $4 million coming in, we would expect to borrow 16 million rather than 20 million, I think is, is the point. So, we, we, we need to either reduce the debt on our borrowing, or we need to go ahead and, and understand that there's still potential that we could find another piece of property that would be more desirable for a West Park, in which case, we could roll that $4 million right over into that project itself, which would be basically doing exactly with the money as the bond money was borrowed for. So, I think there's, there's two options here, either of which I think would be doable.
How, how, how much of the money that's in the general fund right now came from a one-time sale that is already dedicated to projects?
Let me, let me, let me differentiate that, because we've had a one-time sale, for example, the old Franklin Synergy Bank Building. We bought that from the general fund, that did not come from bond money. This is coming from bond money, so we can't put it in the general fund to use for any kind. It's, it's one-time, yes, but it's very unusual for us to do this out of bond money. We normally don't do that.
Where does it go? Like, when they write us the check?
Differently, I had intended to put that money back into the bond money to be respent for projects that are allocated to it, that fit the original resolution, which, as, as Adam said, is written very broad.
But in other words, if it...
Street improvement, for example.
If it goes into that bond fund, that just means that that's money we wouldn't be borrowing.
Correct, correct. It'd be, it'd be, what, Mr. Smotherman's second option was, you'll borrow less, you're already committed for several projects that will need to finish, Cherry Lane. committed for several projects that will need to finish, Cherry Lane, for example. So that may, that may go for a project like that, and it'll just be put back into the bond money, or a recreation project.
We need to make, we need to make sure that if we vote on this tonight, that it's very clear to the council on, when that money comes in, we need a very distinct plan on y'all showing us, this is where it's going to go, this is, you know, in other words, say, in our CIP plan that we looked at 20 million this year, if that goes, if it doesn't close until next year, because who knows what's going to happen now with the economy on, the county may say, hey, we're going to hold off on construction, whatever happens, whatever year that comes in, we need to show, y'all show us where that's going, and how that we're not borrowing based on...
So, we track all the, here's an example of what happens when we borrow funds. If we borrow funds, and I'll make up numbers, if we borrow funds, $10 million for a roadway, and a roadway we get finished, and it's $8 million. That $2 million does not go to the general fund. That money goes and stays in the tracking for the...
To be reallocated.
To be reallocated.
Would you see those project transfers periodically on the consent agenda? Where he's, he's looked at them, where you show them to you?
So, we can develop spreadsheets or whatever to show that as apparent to council, but it does then go to another project and would offset borrowing in the future for any other project.
I think one of the things, one of the issues is that, you know, it gets really confusing, especially with these things as they kind of overlap, and there's X amount of the bonds that have been paid off already, and still this much less, still out there, and all that kind of stuff, that it's easy for this to get really confusing, just for, you know, just for the best word I can come up with. And really, you know, if we think about, you know, if I think about where this gets in budgeting issues, is that, you know, if something like that example happens, what he just laid out, you know, I think it's typically, or I fear that it's, that it happens that, well, we add, you know, we got this $2 million extra dollars that we didn't spend on the road, and so now, instead of just spending 20 million this year, we spend 22 million. Because, hey, we got this $2 million that we already committed for, and now, hey, let's go find something we need to spend this on, because we budgeted for it. So the point is, I mean, it, I mean, look, you got your argument for it, Craig, but I'm telling you, here's what the deal is, from a council level, it's easy for this to get confusing if we can't, if we can't kind of see it. I mean, if there is a bond fund that is where all these proceeds go to, and we can see that separately, I mean, honest, I've been five and a half years, and we've not talked about the bond fund very often in five and a half years, to discuss, oh, well, we sold this property, and it's where it goes. I mean, look, the reality of this is, and the reason this is an important discussion, is because not only do we have impact fees that's going to be coming, we've got the MED money that's going to be coming, that we've already know, we've got some, some decisions to make on how we want that to go, and where we want it to go, and we certainly don't want it to go to the general fund. So I guess, you know, look, all I'm getting at here is, if there's a way that's already in place, that separates this all out, and makes it easy for us to understand, I think the fact of the matter is, it hasn't been very easy for us to understand. If, I mean, you know, maybe I'm just dumb and don't understand it, but I mean, there's, it's not easy, I don't think, you know, so...
My knowledge, though, I want to, I don't think we've ever had a situation where we've divested of something that we borrowed the money for.
It's been a very long time, back when we did the Gateway property. When we bought that Gateway property and we sold it, at that time, it was all with variable rate debt, and our resolution allowed us, and in fact, we had to, pay back the debt principal as we sold, as we sold the property. And, of course, it's been paid off a long time now, and that's why that went into the general fund. But we haven't had, as far as I know, a situation like that in a long time.
When you say it went to the general fund, you mean, like, after the debt was paid off?
Yeah.
Everything that was sold after that went to the general fund?
There was nothing left, that was all profit at that point. We'd paid off all the debt. So it became, it just became into, into the general fund as we sold it. But, other than that, property we bought from the general fund went into the general fund.
Can we do this, then? I think everybody's on the same page. If you put it into community funding, that 4.2, before any transaction happens to that 4.2, would you come back to council and let us know what's going on? Because we need to know that.
I think, yes. Answer that, yes. And what we're talking about here is, I want to make it clear, from a public standpoint, we do this already. And I agree that it hasn't been communicated that well to council, so we can work on that. Certainly, we can get it communicated to council, but what we're talking about here is what we do. Now, as Melissa said, in the past, we've had some profit, and that's offset maybe some operating side. We don't, that's not our understanding of what council desires anymore, and we don't do that, or wouldn't do that anymore. So, I think that the answer here is, we'll show you what's in the bond fund, we'll show you what's left, we'll show you where it's allocated, we can show you how much money is unallocated and can be put towards other projects, and then council can make a decision whether they want to not borrow X amount, or spend that money on another CIP. That's what happens every year, so we don't, we don't do anything other than what you're talking about.
I just think it needs to be easier for, because we're, we're learning things as we sit here today, you know, as we do this, but there may be a different council fighting the exact same issue, dealing with the exact same issue. So, when and where we see opportunities to improve the process, where we can say, there's something in place when we sell a one-time asset, whether it's a bond issue or not a bond issue, that we put procedures in place so that we're not having to be totally dependent upon a city manager to do those things for us, when in fact, in times in the past, we didn't have someone doing that for us. Because there's an inherent weakness in that system without a policy in place.
I agree.
And to your point, I mean, the references often say, you know, you guys spend money like drunken sailors, and, which is an insult to sailors, and it shouldn't even be a term. But, but the, I do think that the point is, is all the council's currently asking for is the importance of accountability, so that we know where the money that comes in, and where the money that goes out is being spent. And we see that in the capital improvement plan, and those type of things, when we go through that in the budget. But, but it's very important that we be able, when somebody says, what did you do with that money? We need to be able to answer that question. This is where that money went that we got, whether it's MED money, or whether it's property money, that where we sold the school. So, it's about accountability that we're looking for.
Yeah, and we can design, as we did last year with the budget, design more information that comes to council. On the CIP side, it would include, I mean, you have the projects, and you have a projection of projects, and I think what we need now is to show where the funding has been coming from, for the projects in the past, as they're ongoing, and then what we anticipate for the future. So, we'll work on that.
If you, if you guys are good with it, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number 18, subject to staff comments, and would love to see what you guys come up with on this other stuff, especially going forward on the other things. That's a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into, all good conversations. I think staff, y'all understand exactly where we are. The average citizen doesn't understand that when we borrow money through our bond, through a bond, it's not like a home equity line of credit, that we, you know, draw that, we get that, those funds, all in one lump sum, and then we spend it, and that's just the way it works. So, these are all really good discussions. All right, we have resolution 20R06, refinance city general waste, excuse me, and water resources general obligation, variable rate debt to fixed rate.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is to refinance variable rate debt. We talked about this in workshop last week, two weeks? Seems like a month ago now, about the process of doing that, and Mr. Warner was here from Cumberland Securities to present to council the benefits of doing that. So this is approval of the resolution that would allow that to go forward.
And this will save us how much money? Craig?
This will save us, well, for the general fund, it will be approximately 200, let's see, $450,000, $450,000 a year, and for water and sewer, about $830,000 a year.
Move for approval.
Is that a year? Savings, or...
That might be total.
I think that's the total.
I think the bigger issue is, because of the instability right now of the market, it will save us the worry of what those rates are going to do. My sheet that I get on that, it went from about 1.2, 1.3% to 5.8% overnight, so...
I want to make, and I hate to go back and read the other things, I was pulling up a definition, perspicacity, which is the quality of having a ready insight into things and shrewdness. We got hammered back many months ago from a former city manager that was telling us that we were really making a mistake going to fixed rate debt. You know, that, that was, we were costing the city money, and then I get the email last night that the variable rate debt right now is over 5.5%. And so I want to make sure that everyone understands that we were 90 under this past individual, we were 90%. At one point, we were 100% variable rate debt. And so if we were at 100% variable rate debt right now, and the council, this council had not made the decision to go to a fixed rate debt, where what we're talking about right now, we would be in a world of hurt right now from a, from a debt service standpoint. So, you know, it's easy to armchair quarterback, and when we were going through what we were going through back in June, but I want to, I want to commend staff for advising the council to get into a fixed rate debt as opposed to a variable rate debt, because it's easy to see the good times when the rates are 1.2%, but when they go to 5, 6%, who knows where they're going moving forward? I appreciate y'all, so...
Likewise. I would stand corrected, it is about, it is, that was, my numbers were total, it's about $260,000 a year, so probably still supports a motion, I would assume.
Still saving quite a bit of money. We'll go for it.
Yeah, it's quite a bit of money, and we do have, we do have good financial advisors with Cumberland Security who watch over our debt program right now, and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
And this is all of the remaining, all the remaining debt, this will be fixed rate.
This will take us...
No, it's not. There's still, there's still two loans that we're not refinancing, because they mature next year.
Yeah, we only have...
And it's just not enough maturity left.
Yeah, I got you.
Second.
Motion is second, and I'd like to put emphasis on the motion in the second.
Mr. LaLance?
I think you did. Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have commercial structures, facilities, printing, or painting, contract extension, water resources. Mr. Gore?
Mayor, council, thank you for coming tonight. I suppose I've presided at time. Appreciate the ability to come and continue to do business in the Water Resources Department. I have a, the table on a slide here, so I don't know if I call it a slideshow, but this is a four-year contract that we bid back in 2018, and it is in effect to repaint several, really the entire water treatment plant, that was, a lot of areas in need of repainting. So this is year three of a four-year contract, and the total that we are coming forward to you to ask tonight, again, it's been bid for, two years ago, is $431,300, and these are the areas, if that makes any difference to you, the areas that we're painting this upcoming fiscal year. So we would request that you approve the extension of this contract for year three.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We now have engineering task order for water resources for recovery facility biosolids, polymer system replacement.
Yes, sir. This is another, this is kind of a picture of our polymer system feed. This polymer is introduced into our biosolids, and it helps us de-water those biosolids through our rotary presses. We have a total, we've actually budgeted for this project through our rate, or our reserve bucket, our reserve funds, a total estimated cost of 1.595 million. However, tonight, we're just asking for the engineering and construction administration task order in the amount of 112,235, but I did want to show you the overall cost associated with this project. This is just kind of step one of replacing this equipment that's reached the end of its useful life. So I'm available for questions if you have any.
Darren, is this equipment designed for a surge in toilet paper?
Well, yes, sir. Yes.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, I'll be honest, and this is, if my wife's watching, she'll appreciate this. She has been really on me, she's saying, we need to get a public service announcement out there, because people are going to start flushing those, quote, flushable wipes, that really are not designed to flush, and I've been asking operation and maintenance, because they clog our pumps, they're not biodegradable, and I've been asking our guys, say, listen, if you see an uptick in pumps getting clogged, because people are flushing these flushable wipes, that are promoted as flushable lights, flushable wipes, but they're really not, because I said, we need to know. So we really need to get the word out, only flush toilet paper.
I think you just got it out. So moved.
Public衆SA, Darren Gore.
Spread the word.
Spread the word.
Oh, Lord.
I do have, I'll have one question, just to make sure, and this is something that's, I just think is a, something that we've talked about before in other projects and whatnot. Is 112,000, you know, I just did the quick math, about 7% of this project? That seems like a lot. Is that, is that the appropriate amount of money to spend on engineering and construction admin for that size of a project, for what you do?
Yes, sir, it is.
But you're asking an engineer, too, so...
Well, there's a, you know, I always do check that, what is the engineering fee in a percent basis to construction? As you get into these smaller, more intricate projects, I mean, this is some plant, this is some sophisticated work that's going to require, we're doing controls, and we're doing some mechanical, the plumbing and the HVAC. If you get into a $10 million project, 7% may not be the appropriate, it may be more like a 4%.
I trust you on, I just want to make sure, I mean, you know, it just, those things always kind of stand out to me, and you got it highlighted, so it really stands out. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to sewer basin 10A3, 10A4, density restriction and civil infrastructure associate study.
This item was, we wanted to pull this item for tonight, if that's possible.
All right, so that is going to be pulled. We'll move, one, real quick, Darren...
Yes.
We have pushed back, and talked to Mr. Huddleston today, I think we're on the same page, but I think it'd be good to go for the council to publicly say this. We've pushed back a lot of these public hearings to April the 30th, and our sewer ordinance that we passed was going to go into effect April 15th.
Right.
And I think it's the understanding of staff and the council that if we're pushing back our public hearings, for a lot of people who are trying, that we need to make sure that that sewer ordinance is also being pushed back in conjunction with the public hearings.
We have a resolution under other business that will accomplish just what you described.
There you go. All right.
I want to make one comment, too. Of course, Eddie and I, being on the planning commission, we see a lot of this earlier on, but I've seen, and I know staff has, had to deal with kind of an influx of approval stuff related to the sewer allocation. I think we knew that was going to happen when we set the grandfathering date, but really want to tell the planning staff how much I appreciate, how hard I know they've had to work to try to be accommodating for what we're deciding we think is fair from the standpoint of doing that. But also to know that I have seen, from my opinion, maybe some plans that were not as good a quality come through, trying to fit and squeeze that stuff in. So, I just want folks to know that, you know, we are watching that, and very appreciative of the staff that, of how hard they've worked during that period of time.
resolution to adjust the deadlines for certain plans, approval dates due to adjustment of planning commission meeting dates. So this will do everything that we just talked about.
Correct. Do you want me to, I, I can go through the dates, or?
No, it's a, you, you don't have to.
Okay.
I think we're, we're, we're good.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You also have adoption of an emergency pay policy. Mr. Tindall?
Yeah, we do. Um, the president signed ye, uh, yesterday, the, um, an act that provides for emergency pay, sick leave, uh, amending the, uh, or subs, supplementing the, uh, FMLA plan that, um, the city's long-guessed, uh, all employers have. Um, and it provides for pay for, uh, certain, for individuals that are out of work for a period of time related to the coronavirus crisis that, that we're all dealing with right now. You have that before you, and that allows the city to, uh, as I said, uh, pay consistent with the federal act that was just passed. And we also have a provision in there that allows for the city to compensate employees who are displaced from their employment temporarily, um, because of a closure of a city facility, uh, because of the same emergency. So if you have any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to answer about the, the, uh, pay policy.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Tindall. Um, you have two boarding commission appointments, or excuse me, any licensing, Ms.?
Not tonight.
Okay. Um, you have, uh, Mr. Lindsay, who left the cable TV commission, and you have Mr. Dennis O'Neill that we're recommending to, uh, fill that expiring term, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And then you also have, um, we are recommending, uh, reappointments for the pension committee, and we have a council member who took a new job, uh, and because of those job, we can't have that individual on making decisions, because we do business with that company. So I'm recommending, Mr. Kurt Wade, to handle, uh, the representative as, on the pension commission.
Excellent choice.
Solid, right there. I'll move for approval.
And Dennis O'Neill actually was the chairman of the cable commission for several years, so it's nice to have him back on.
Great.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?